I know, but he has like people to go with him, so he's not by himself.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Max can't go with him.
Was, uh, meeting in the Parowan City plan and zoning together? Or, uh, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, episode six oh one two. Our first order of business, are there any conflicts or items on the agenda?
Nope.
I have none.
I have heard. Well, nothing noted, thank you. Next item will be the approval of the minutes from January fourth, twenty twenty-three. So, the only thing that I, I wanted to double check on this was up in the members present, I'm pretty sure Dan was not prepared for that meeting.
Yep, that's all right, okay.
If we could get those that corrected. Any other things noted?
None.
I'd entertain a motion if that's true.
I'll make a motion to approve January fourth minutes with the added changes.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Our next order of business is parcel boundary adjustment and record survey for Roma Pebble at three hundred south, three hundred east. And Steve Wolsey is here to chat with us about that.
Yeah, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, just let everybody know I'm Steve Wolsey with Wolsey Land Survey. Here tonight on behalf of Roma Pebble, uh, she lives, excuse me, there on three hundred south and three hundred west. Couple of years ago, I did a minor subdivision for their parcel. Took, took their parcel, split it up into two, and created her house parcel and a parcel to her west, so that maybe she could eventually sell it to her kids. Now, this is Uma, so Uma is the mother, but the property under Roma, her daughter's name, so if I actually accidentally say Uma or Roma, just, just know that Roma, her daughter, actually own the property. So, anyway, when I, uh, she called me a couple of weeks ago, and Uma did, um, and said, hey, we'd like to maybe adjust our common property line west a little bit to include a couple of trees that we have out there. And I said, yeah, listen, as long as we don't end any situation with zoning issues or anything like that, we shouldn't have a problem. So, basically, is what we...
In YouTube, and they can't hear you on...
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, Judy. I felt, well, I really don't need one, because I've never been told I haven't.
Me either.
It worked for a second, didn't it, or no?
Can you, can you come in here?
You want me to?
No, that's okay.
Would they like me to start? Can they hear me all? Can everybody hear me? Yeah? You're right. So, uh, Roma and Uma wanted to adjust that common boundary line nine feet west. So, basically...
Steve, excuse me, is this adjusted between the two of them?
Correct.
Okay.
It only affects the...
Okay.
So, if you look, if you look on your map, their parcel one is owned by Roma, parcel two is owned by Roma. Parcel two just happens to be what we call the house parcel, that's the parcel that the house sits on. And, and so, only have one owner to deal with, so that makes it real nice.
It is really... You can probably, yeah, you can stand...
Hmm.
So, there's just one owner, there isn't even two owners?
No, Roma, Roma owns both of them.
Cause when you said Roma and, who was it, or...
Well, Uma has her owner, so, I, I'm basically do, I, I do everything through Uma, but, cause Roma is always up to Brianhead working, so, but, this is actually Roma's property, she is the owner of both parcels.
Okay.
Um, family reasons why she owns it, right? But, uh, but, we're just dealing with one owner, Roma owns both parcels, Uma doesn't own anything, and Roma, Uma is just my negotiator, right?
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was a little confused, sorry.
Sorry, I, I probably didn't...
No, it wasn't your fault, I just, Roma and Uma, I, okay.
Okay. So, basically, we're just adjusting that line west nine feet. Is what it does is historically, parcel two had point four four acres, parcel three had point, or parcel one, excuse me, two, had point two seven. So, by adjusting that nine feet west, parcel one now has point four one, parcel two has point three. So, the smaller parcel grows a little bit, so we don't have to worry about getting into any type of zoning issues or anything like that, or well within those regulations. So, one of the, uh, and I think Larry's probably wants to touch base on this, maybe Larry and Dan both, but, back when I did the minor subdivision, that common boundary line, there was a seven and a half foot utility easement placed on either side of it, so fifteen feet wide, seven and a half each side of that property line. Now, we're moving the property line, it's a public easement, so what do we do with it? We, we wanna keep it there, just in case it's ever needed, but, we don't want it sitting where histor- it is right now, right? We wanna shift it nine feet west, and so, there are no utilities in that area whatsoever, so...
So, can you just move the utility to match the shift in the line?
Well, that's some discussion Dan and I have.
So, and I talked this over with Justin, because, you know, if this was a public road, it would be a whole different conversation than a public utility easement, which, which is something that serves the city, we have our, we potentially could have our utilities in there, or it gives us access to go ahead and, and work on our utilities. Justin's perspective was, um, we shifted public utility easement with the property boundary, and, um, as long as it doesn't cause a problem with our, like, functionally with our utilities, if we had a water lane in there, this would be a whole different thing, we would want to actually record an easement to maintain where the water line is. Since we don't have utilities there, to shift that with the boundary line is entirely appropriate. If it was a, if it was a road that was being used by the public, then it would be a di- different story altogether as well, but since this is just, um, an easement for the public utilities...
And there's nothing there.
And there's nothing there, Ju- Justin said he thought that would be just fine.
And you'd still leave it proportional to the existing line, seven and a half feet on each side?
Yep, so you get fifteen feet. Yep.
So, where does that leave us in terms of the continuation of that easement? I, I presume, maybe not correctly, that it starts to the north and south, or runs north and south, to the other lots that are adjacent to that, or...
So, the, and, and Steve can answer that.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at your drawing, the, the south boundary of parcels one and two, which is the north right-of-way line of three hundred south street, when I created that minor, I created a ten-foot wide public utility easement along there, that, that doesn't change, that stays the same. There are actually some utilities in that line, historically, the utilities were there, we had no easement. So, when I did the minor, I created it, and, and most of your roadways, all are required to have a ten-foot PUE, public utility easement. So, so, we created that, that doesn't move. When we shift this line nine feet to the west, we're just shifting also the easement. That easement does run north and south until it hits the other easement, so up on the north, you'll notice there is a ten-foot wide power line easement there, that has been there historically, there is an existing power line that runs east and west along that, along that property line. So, that doesn't change, so it's what you typically do, is you have this fifteen-foot wide easement that comes up, and it technically goes all the way to the north property line, but, you also have, on the south, you have an existing ten-foot that comes in. So, if you look at the dashed lines on my drawing, you kinda see where they're filleted there? That's just one continuous easement as it, as it goes up through there, so, did that answer your question, Larry?
Well, what I'm wondering is, is, as the, in this drawing, as, as you continue towards the top of the screen with that easement, is there an easement through that next piece of property that's now offset?
You mean, the, the adjacent property owned by another person to the north?
Yeah, that, A zero zero three eight, zero zero three nine, zero zero four zero.
No, that term, this easement terminates, she can only grant what she physically owns, so, that easement terminates at her north boundary line.
And that lot to the north is one large...
It's a great big organic house.
Lot, and it has no easement going through the middle of it?
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, there was no easement there until you did the minor lot subdivision?
No, there wasn't.
The easement is there by, because we require that, and, maybe, but regardless, it was done at the time of the easement?
Yeah.
I mean, at the time of the minor lot.
The only easement that was there of record was the ten-foot electrical easement up on the north, so I created the seven and a half foot on the west side of parcel one, I created the, the seven and a half each side of the common boundary between one and two, and I created the ten-foot surrounding the, the roadway, so...
So, what was the reason of initially creating this?
I was just gonna say that, that was part of Justin's opinion, is he said that easement was there because of Parowan's...
Requirement.
Requirement, that, that it go along the, the parcel boundary, not because of any physical reason for the easement. It was just put there when the, when the lot was subdivided, we just put a public utility easement along the boundary line, not because we actually had any utilities or anything there, so, that's why he said, moving it is, it's not there because of use, it's not there because of any other reason than we required it, so now to move the property line, as long as it doesn't cause a physical problem, or a problem with any physical utilities, you've just now adjusted what we required them to have there.
Yeah, and just, incidentally, Dave, let me explain a little bit, so, my minor, when I created it, was, I think I did it in twenty eighteen. So, I've probably done fifty minors since then, and here, and adjustments, so, what was, what happened since then is, when Cleve was here, we would take each, so if I came in and, and was doing a minor on a, on another piece of property, we would talk about this, and I, I said, so, I'm putting a seven and a half foot public utility easement because it's what you guys want, and, I remember Cleve come up and says, don't put one here, he says, we have an exact, here's where I want my utilities, he says, because we have a power line running here, we have a power line running here, and he says, all of our utilities are basically in, he goes, so here's where we need them, and there, there's been a few subsequent minors and parcel adjustments that, that we've done, that he specifically said, we don't want one here, there's no, chances are, there will never be any utility going through there.
Right, and I don't think you want to encumber the property when there's unnecessary.
And that, that's exactly the case, now, there's some things where you just have to do it because it's in your ordinance, right? So, following the ordinance is we have to comply. I think Cleve looked at that at that time, and he says, you know, there's nothing, I don't, I'm pretty sure, Dan, we, we looked at that pretty closely, and I don't know if there was any specific ordinance that basically said that we have to have it used on every single...
And I was gonna mention that, that we really need to look at this, because state code says that, that boundary line adjustments of a, of the same party are not subject to a...
The land use authority.
Land use authority, and the way you interpret that is that somebody can go in, if they own both pieces of property, just like this, and they can adjust it, they can go get it recorded, they could have Steve survey it, they can go get it recorded, according to state law, without even coming to the city. Now, in our current, in our current code, and certainly our policy, says that they need to come and present it to planning commission like they're doing right now, um, because it could affect lots of things, they could go legally adjust the boundary, and we could say, no, you just caused a zoning problem, you caused a problem with where our hookups are in the back of the property, now, two, one lot has two hookups, and the other lot has no hookup, so, we're gonna still ask people to come to the city, to the planning commission, so we can review these, we can look at our connections, we can look at zoning, we can look at easements, but, do we really wanna have a mandated public utility easement whenever somebody does a minor lot subdivision per code? I don't know, we oughta ask that.
Well, I haven't seen any code that says that.
I don't know if it, there is there, I need to...
But I haven't looked for it, so, um, I'll...
The fact that Cleve was telling him, don't put one in in this case, we don't need it, if our code said you had to, there's not even a discussion, so, anyways...
Yeah, and if we do have code, I suspect it is more along the line of, if there's one there, if there needs to be one there, that's when we would require it, but, anyway, I'll check it out and get to the bottom of that, but I don't think that impacts this issue. Um, really, uh, unless there's other questions, I'd entertain a motion in this regard.
Can I make just one last comment, real quick? So, to explain the moving and the easement, I, I've included that in, in my new legal description, so, get the legal description of the new parcel, and then I see subject to it together with an existing seven and a half foot, and ten, and, and call out the existing easement, but on this particular one, I reference the book and page in which that easement was created, and, and that it is now being shifted, basically, so, so it's just got some verbal language in there that says that the easement is meant to be being moved. On the notice of approval, the, the city signs, right, that, that gives us the permission and, and you're stating that you've given us the approval to do this, I've al- typically, I don't put anything but the property description on there, before legal and after legal, right? But on this one, when I talked to Dan, I said, you know, when you guys are signing this and, and stamping it as a planning commission, and we talked about maybe having the mayor sign it too, right, this notice of approval, so that, so that, it kinda gave intent that the city's given us approval to move that easement, cause...
You know, we, we did talk about that, and since then, Larry and I have talked, and we've talked that through, and Larry shared some of the same concerns that I had originally, we don't wanna give, because this is an administrative thing, we don't wanna give any, we don't wanna make it look at all like this is a legislative approval, and so, maybe why don't you describe your, your thoughts along those lines, which was my original thought, and the mayor is not legislative approval, but does it now look like it's more, um, I don't know?
Well, typically, on these plots, it looks like the mayor signs, and it says...
City council approved it, and the mayor signs it.
Right, so, my recommendation is that we don't add the mayor to this, because it's not required, it's overkill, why bother?
And that's fine, I just don't wanna do anything that doesn't go along and harm anyone of you guys, so, and I'm fine with that, that's...
Any other questions for Steve? Do we have? Your name's not on that, don't worry.
Yeah, he's not Jake.
I would entertain a motion on this, uh, on this agenda item. How should it be worded? All right, I'll do it. I, I recommend that this lot spit, be, lot split?
Parcel.
Par- I'm sorry, parcel, parcel adjustment be approved as presented.
I will second that.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Safe travels home.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Will you help me? Let's see, what's next? Billboard, oh, my favorite.
All right, so our next agenda item is, uh, billboard code, and in the last meeting, I told, I told you that I would look and do kind of a survey of billboards and get something for Parowan City, so, not quite sure how to do this, I have a pointer, and if we can see the big screen, it'd be a little bit easier, otherwise, you'll be able to see the same picture on your screen, but I can't use a laser pointer there.
Just point it at my eyes, it'll be fine.
Okay, we got you. So, Judy, if you would bring up the, uh, inters- the, uh, UDOT map, please? Okay. I'm gonna try it.
It was. Is the battery dead?
No. It's got a red light on.
Yeah, that's, that's not a good sign. Means the battery is kaputched. Otherwise, it'd be green LED. Green means go, red means big trouble. Turn the volume down, Jude.
Now, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Sort of, okay, try that. So, the map that you're looking at on your screen is a UDOT application that basically tracks billboards, and really, I don't know what else, but, not sure how well you can read that, but, Judy, if, whoops, I'm gonna turn it on. On this side here, if we can get...
We're back, Larry.
We need to look over here, but, there we go. Yes.
Your microphone's back.
It is, okay. So, what UDOT has in this regard is these little yellow boxes, or orange boxes, or whatever color you'd like to call those, you're looking at I fifteen, of course, and those yellow boxes are actual billboards. If, Judy, if you would click on one of those, just pick one, click on it. Right, so, when you do that, you get sign information, it tells you who owned it, and sometimes, this one didn't do that, but some of them have two or three or five pages. This is kind of the nicest page, and it will tell, it tells you the permit number, which is important if you were ever wanting to refer to a specific billboard to tell UDOT that it had blown over, or the sign was gone, or the lights were flashing, or something, they would want that permit number. So, that said, you can close that box, please. If, now, if you'll just scroll along, drag along I fifteen there, now we're headed towards Parowan Town, keep going. Now, if you look, you'll see up in this area, there's, what, five signs, so there's two on the north, northbound side, and there's three on the, the, uh, southbound side. Four? There is? One, two, oh, yeah, 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 thank you, okay, that's fun. Notice the little note at the bottom of the handout, all measurements are derived from satellite imagery and are approximate, so if you'll scroll farther along there, so there's the northern exit, exit seventy-eight, keep going, right there is probably good for now. So, you'll see that there's five there, and I think a little bit farther down the road, there's another one, it's not terribly important that we see it, just know that, yeah, there it is, and that's the extent of the signs, that one's outside of city limits. Now, that said, that's sort of the introduction to that page, you'll see all those little numbers, or mile post marker numbers, and tenths of a mile, but the green dot is actually where the line is, not the numbers, I did a lot of work with, thinking the number was the spot, but it's really the, the green dots are a tenth of a mile apart. So, there's twelve billboards, all in all, in or near the Parowan city limits, um, the north end of our city limit is, I think, can you scroll so we can, so the runway drops straight down, the other way? Just straight down on your screen, towards the bottom. So, I'm not terribly familiar with these, but one of these, this one, or this one, is Kane Springs Road, and, so at mile seventy-eight, that's seventy-nine, can you scroll it up now a bit? Okay, so somewhere along here, that's not right either.
City limits do go, they kinda snake back around and go, like, down to the bottom of the screen, if I remember right.
Yeah, well, at, at any rate, they line up with one of these like this, which might be Kane Springs Road, and that's about the extent of the city limit, and the point there is this signs out, these four are in, so if you'll scroll back now, towards the center of town, with I fifteen still in the picture. That's probably good. So, the south end of the city limit, maybe we need to go farther south, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have you scrolling all over the place there, along the fifteen, so this is Eagle Rock, and the city limit extends over, probably that sign is like right on a boundary, not sure if it's in or out, but this is the Eagle Rock subdivision, this is sort of the southern end. So, there's other things on this handout that you'll look at, um...
I think that's out.
Yeah, south end of the city limit is seventy-four.
I think Eagle Rock is kinda by itself.
Yeah, so it's, it's somewhere up in here, this road is, this Goldbert Road, and those things are in the city. So, that's the south end. Now, for the rules for signs, and a lot of this is, is listed in the assumptions on this page, so the permitted zones for, um, billboards is industrial and manufacturing, GC one and HS one, so highway services and general commercial. So, in our zoning map, those are red and yellow, and, and probably gray, I'm thinking for industrial, and we'll look at that in just a minute. So, the other assumption is a sign has to be within a hundred foot of the I fifteen right-of-way, now, I personally don't know where that extends, but it would be off the blacktop somewhere, I'm sure, and then it's gotta be greater than five hundred feet from any exit or entrance ramp, and they describe that precisely as some point of widening, so I'm thinking it's down in here somewhere, where this starts to widen for us to go on and come in the other way, kind of a thing, and, and then they must be greater than two hundred feet from any residential zone, and they've gotta be two hundred foot from neighboring, uh, property boundaries, and they've gotta be six hundred feet from other billboards. Now, UDOT says five hundred feet, but the code that we submitted for review, we changed that to six hundred feet. So, now, Judy, if you would bring up the Iron County zoning map? I think you had that up in the corner. Yeah, good, okay, there we go. So, here we are at the south end of... of town down, I'm looking for, okay, so here. And here's where these billboards actually exist.
No, that's-
No.
No, that's-
That's a different one?
That's someone's.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, we're right here, okay, sorry, thank you. So those little billboards are out here somewhere, south end. You can see across that that's, can you scroll, well, you don't need to, just hold it right there. Good. So this orange color is like residential five acres. This color, I haven't been able to tell what it is yet, I, it's either-
What color is it?
Commercial, this little part right here, so you come off the freeway here somewhere and turn left and you're basically looking at, at this parcel. It's either a residential one or a general commercial. But it's county zone, not, um, Parowan city zone.
Yeah.
Now, these big red ones are all county properties. So you see that in this area, it extends both side of the, both sides of the freeway. And then we get into some Parowan stuff in this area, which now we're talking about the area where the four signs were, that were sort of by cowens and in the middle of town and by the storage units on the other side of the freeway. Then we go up here and we hit another, um, residential zone in the county.
So pink is residential in county zoning?
Pink is county.
It's residential half.
Yeah, we're looking at the county zoning map.
Yeah. Right, and so going up the other side, as we get out of town, if you switch to the southbound side, you'd see back here, there's a bunch of residential. Up here, there's some residential.
So I have this, I have this colored map right here.
That's Parowan City.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so where the existing four are in the middle of the town, you're saying that's county?
I think so.
Cause on this, it looks like it's R two.
So here's our zoning map.
Yeah.
And so the only way that we can reconcile those two maps to each other-
Uh-huh.
Is to actually toggle back and forth between the two or put them on two different screens and look at them at the same time.
But if you look at, if you look at, so the yellow is general commercial and if you look at the, the bottom left, that's where your, that's where your southern ones are-
Yeah.
That are within the city, are within general commercial. Red is highway service-
Yeah.
Which is up at the top, which I believe those four are either in highway service or they're in-
So, so straight down with that map?
Oh, I was just talking about the four and then the two in the middle of town.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be, oh, in the middle of town.
Right there.
I think-
They're right where Judy's cursor is, isn't it?
Right, right, I think they're right here because this is county.
No, I'm talking about the two that Diane Bixman owns, it's right where Judy's cursor is. That's where the two are and then the other four on the other side of the road, right?
Uh, is that down the street?
Yeah, that's, that's where it would be.
We'd have to look at the other map.
That's about where the, where the, the intersection, the, the underpass goes through in the middle.
And I believe there was two on this side and then four on the other side. So the two currently, I thought that would be in R two, right?
Let's toggle back to the, to the actual.
So, uh, there's a problem here because I know for a fact that the Bixman sign and, is it at the storage units, is that what you think?
Yeah, I thought, oh, it might be actually in the blue too, on, uh-
Well-
No, I guess there is that little bit of gray, huh?
Well, you have to think about the scale of this map.
Yeah.
You know, this is quite a bit of different scale. So one of those signs where the four are, if you come across to the southbound side where there's two signs, one of those is a Bixman sign and one of those is somebody else.
Mhm.
The one that's at the storage units, those storage units are zoned residential.
Yeah, that's what I think.
They're not commercial.
Yeah.
So they've got to be in either this color or, or this color. Something like that. And, so scrolling though, as we, well, scrolling, but looking along here, what we end up with is, and this is sort of a rough guess and that might not withstand a good hard challenge. So on the northbourn- northbound side of the freeway, there's potential for two more signs. And plus at, oh, that would be from the south city limit to the, uh, overpass. You could, there's a chance that two could, would sneak in there. Then if you go from the exit seventy-five overpass to the exit seventy-eight overpass, so we're talking about spanning the distance from, where's the interchange? Is it interchange? So from here up to here, there's only space for like two more. And the reason for that is all the commercial property along here and the existing signs. And when you think about spacing and six hundred feet apart and then add the compounding factor of you've got to be farther away in a residential district and property lines and so on and so on, about two. And then when you get up to this end of town, about six. So that's on the northbound side. On the southbound side, given all that property, that's county property and the fact that there's four signs along there already, we end up with a potential for two, roughly. Now, I'm not saying it couldn't, you know, be more than that, but you're gonna send a surveyor out to figure that out and go look at property lines. It's, it's really-
And if any zoning changes, then it could open up more potential.
Right, and, yeah, that's another assumption, that the zoning is as it is. If the zoning were to change, like down here, if somebody came in and these turned to residential, depending on what they put it and where they put it, it might bump the potential for one or two of those.
So this white section here?
Here?
Yep.
Uh-huh.
That's county.
That's county?
So that could-
So that could potentially, in the future, open up and be-
Something different.
Something different, whether commercial highway services or-
It could, yes, it could.
So our future land use-
So we could, our future could potentially add more in that strip, right?
Yeah.
Our future transportation plan shows a frontage road going along the freeway and I know at least one property owner has the intention of trying to zone that, annex it and, and zone it commercial or highway service. Um, we have it on our future land use map as R two medium density, I believe, in that area. But that, that, future land use map hasn't been looked at since like two thousand and three anyways. But my, but that's, Heather, that's my point exactly. If, if that were to be, let's say you have a frontage road and you have people that want to develop it commercial and, and a zone, and a zone change was permitted, a- actually, when it was annexed, it was allowed to be zoned that way in the first place, then you could potentially open up right below where it says Interstate fifteen, more billboard sites if that all happened.
Right.
And also Larry, technically, along two hundred south-
Mhm.
Is also UDOT road and it's also zoned highway service. So theoretically, you could have billboards coming up Holyoke.
They would not be UDOT billboards.
With the exception of the fact that's a scenic byway and they don't allow billboards there other than if it's advertising whatever is on the property. But maybe up Main Street, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe out Paragona Highway?
Right, a- and, yes, so you're, you're actually right about that and the difference there be, well, the issue right now is we are not talking about billboards along anything except the I fifteen corridor. So right now, anybody, well, I shouldn't say anybody, property owners along here can have signs in accordance with ours, our sign code.
No, I'm saying if we were to, I mean, when we're talking billboards and permitted by UDOT, they allow them along UDOT rightaways.
Y- yes, I, I agree.
And so Holyoke Lane is a UDOT rightaway, it's a UDOT road.
Yes, and, and for our code that we submitted, I believe it says in there we are talking about or it's applicable to the I fifteen corridor.
Oh, okay, in the code that's submitted, I got you.
Right.
Cause I missed the last meeting and I apologize.
Yeah, so if they were to, to throw away, um-
So if we had no billboard code and just relied on the state?
And UDOT walked in the, or a, a landowner walked in the door and said, I want to put a billboard up and you say, well, UDOT controls that and he, but here's a sign off that says it's up to them and they manage all of that and try and figure it out. But without any local code, it is strictly gonna be their code. So they might not come down here and, and, and look at, oh, there's a building right there or something, they, you know.
So yet another argument to get this billboard code put in place and say where we'll consider it.
Well, yeah, so right now, it excludes those general commercial areas and Main Street and, and Holyoke Lane. We could formulate it if we think we need to capture those, but that really wasn't the intent. Uh, yeah.
Good point.
But where does a historical come in?
At six hundred, I think.
Did it stop right there?
Yeah, I think it stopped.
It, it is approximately, follows the yellow.
So it does not go down Holyoke Lane?
It, I, my understanding is it used to and then-
Right, it used, it don't.
It stops at six hundred.
Yeah.
However, that is the scenic byway.
And there's special rules and, and that's almost like yet another chapter of code for us. If, cause you saw what billboards is now. If, if we were to take that and say, yeah, that works and then we said, well, we need to do for here and here as well, we would sit down and do another bit of research to make sure we got that correct and, and so on.
The scenic byway follows one forty-three as it comes down, intersects Main Street, goes down to two hundred north and then out to the freeway, seventy, exit seventy-
Yeah, so it comes down here and down here and somewhere, is this where it goes up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when did the historical district boundary change?
Oh, I don't know, it was quite some time ago.
Cause that's why that we've had the whole carbon gutter and discussion because when that-
Well, I know, but when did it change because it hasn't been, it was not that long ago.
We'd have to check with the chair.
Yeah.
Or the committee, cause I don't know, I just, matter of fact, I think it was Jim Shirtliff that told us that that had changed, that, I know, I didn't know it ever had. I thought, well, it's there and I didn't worry about it. He kind of got up and told us the story about it, it used to extend-
All the way down.
Mhm. Oh, yeah, cause the foothills and all that was involved.
Right.
So.
Well, anyway, so that's kind of how I see it. There's some other things on that handout that might be handy future references that have some approximate distances between some specific spots on the freeway and so on. And if you ever, that little UDOT, um, application is a pretty handy thing if you want to know about signs to, to be able to click on it. Any questions?
Thank you.
And you, and you did submit that to legal for review, the, your proposed?
Yes. Last week.
Okay.
Larry Smith with some changes.
And we ended up, in the, it, for those that were at the land use seminar, remember how that came up and we, we asked Craig Call and so it'll be interesting to see how that goes through. I know Justin was, was looking at that and had some different opinions and was gonna kind of drill into it, so.
Yeah, so Justin was looking at that.
I can't hear me.
Oh, that mic. Um, so Justin was looking at that and as Dan said at the land use training, he, he and I discussed that just a little bit and he was wondering what we were trying to do cause he thought, are you trying to not have signs? And he said, no, we're trying to allow signs. And he says, well, UDOT manages all that and of course, that was one of the questions we were asking. Do we need to drop most of that code and let, just let UDOT do their code and do what UDOT does? And then we would simply have a much smaller page or two that has Parowan city requirements to get a permit and do all that stuff. And so that, that's where that stands right now, we don't have any direct feedback yet from-
Yeah, I talked to Justin and went through the-
Oh, okay, so Kristen, do you want to bring us up to speed?
Um, so with the, uh, says billboard signs shall not be permitted.
Is your mic on?
Oh, yeah, I'm just sitting really far away from it. Um, in the first, I guess it's the second page, uh, where it says billboard signs, billboard signs shall not be permitted except under the following conditions. Um, one of the concerns that, that Justin and I had was it says, you know, you can get a permit that's valid for five years. When a lot of these cases, they're gonna be dumping, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and some change into a sign. And five years isn't really, I mean, if, if you guys want to keep it at five years, but our opinion was is it would be better that it's a, a permanent permit unless it falls out of compliance.
So what I believe, and I don't have it here in front of me, but I'm, that's a state code reference.
Is it?
That's UDOT, that's not me, for us.
That's fine.
Um, so are you gonna forward those comments to us in writing or something that we can actually-
I can.
But, yeah, I, I believe just, um, that we didn't come up with that, that that's a clip out of the UDOT code.
Okay.
And we thought it made sense to, or at least I thought it made sense to, uh, have our permits expire when theirs expire.
And that's fine, um, my other big question was on the non-conforming billboards. So is it, non-conforming signs are removed from any zone in which signs are non-conforming within three years? Is that the state code as well? Cause I, I didn't have a chance to look at that, I just looked through this.
I believe so.
Yeah, that's pretty much the state code.
Okay.
And, and the state code is way more extensive than that. And we were hoping that, uh, legal will take a, a hard look at that because there's things in there where if you have a non-conforming sign and you force it to be removed, you, you have to buy it.
Yeah.
And the terms of the sale are not favorable to the, to the municipality.
So that's-
Yeah, we don't want to do that. It could get expensive in a hurry, some of these billboards are expending.
Well, and one thing that should, I think should be mentioned is that there, these billboards are not a great revenue source for the city.
Yes.
Well, I just-
Agreed.
Cause it- I don't know if anyone cares, but that ordinance was amended on March, um, fourteenth of twenty nineteen. It's, um, that's when the new boundaries were drawn. It's pretty easy to pull it up and see, um, but it's fifteen dot four two dot zero five zero when those boundary lines were changed.
You're talking about historical?
Mhm.
Okay.
What was that piece of code?
Fifteen dot four two dot zero five zero.
And the date?
Three fourteen, I'm sorry, three, well, it was signed, three fourteen twenty nineteen. So fairly recently, but that ordinance shows the map of the new boundaries.
Thank you.
So Larry, I've got a question then, was a lot of this just pulled from the state code? Okay.
So, uh, just coarsely describing what I did when that was pulled together, is I went and looked at the state code and, and looked at code in some of the other cities and things.
Okay.
And basically, the, the early part of that code is where it says, here's what you do in Parowan city. So if it has anything to do with Parowan city and doing something with the city, that's things that, that I wrote. And all, most of the other things are straight out of state code.
Okay.
But it is exhaustive. And so one of the questions on the back page of the, the one that I think went to you guys was, do we need to drop all this code in the middle and let the state do all that stuff? And all we need is the part that says, yeah, we need a permit and a couple of things like that.
You could very easily just refer to the state code and say anything not specifically described herein, you know, anything else, uh, we follow state code on.
Advantage of that is if the state changes their code, we now don't have incompatible code.
Right, it's nice to do that and so we've done that in annexation. So when we read annexation in our, our city code, it basically says we've adopted state code.
Yeah, you just say adopt the state code as amended.
Right, e- exactly.
But, but can we make sure we have the wording? Cause you're talking about state code is a thousand square foot sign, but we were talking about six hundred and- Because you're talking about state code is a thousand square foot sign, but we were talking about six hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, so anything that we decide to narrow is- is what would be specific to our ordinance. And then everything else that we decide we don't want to wade into, that's the state code. So anything not conflicting with our ordinance in the state code is valid and that's what you rely on. Does that make sense?
It does to me. Anybody else have questions about that? So I- for- from my opinion, a- after looking really in- in trying to write this billboard code, I mean, there are so many things in the state code and so many, um, uh, options, I guess, of, you know, if this happens and if that happens and if this happens, you go this direction or some other direction. To put that into our city code would just be absurd because we would just be regurgitating it, because we're not going to- I mean, we're not going to be able to go do the research to see how many of these things. And then we are valid and we can't- we can't violate the state code. So in that regard, it would be my recommendation that we just take another look at that, shorten it immensely and make it specific to billboards in Parowan. And just write, you know, "We need a permit" and I don't recall now what else it says here. Um, I see one here, "Parowan City shall upon written request give reasonably timely written notice to all outdoor advertising permit holders within its jurisdiction of any change or proposed change to the outdoor off-premise advertising provisions." So let's just use that for an example. The reason I put that in there is I don't believe that we would actually go and read state code if somebody come in and says, "I'd like to put a billboard in." I- I think we would say, "Where?" And we might look at some distances and we make sure it's in the right zone and the right kind of property. But if we decide somewhere down the road that we want to modify that billboard code, I don't think we would go look at state code and realize we have to notice people if it's not in the Parowan code. Because that's an important thing.
Yeah.
And it's not just a- a notice of some kind of a public hearing. It's a specific notice for people that have billboards within our jurisdiction. So things like that would stay. And I think I mentioned it before, UDOT is the enforcer of their code. The only way that we as a municipality, I mean, we could probably make a phone call, but as a municipality, if we saw a sign that was tattered, torn, or- or in some way not kept- was not maintained appropriately, we would go to that UDOT website, we would get the permit number, and there's actually a- a place, not on that map, but like one click back somewhere, where you can actually go in and you file a complaint with UDOT and then they'll take it from there. Questions?
So are you going to shorten this and send us a new copy to go through or?
So we would need a motion to do that, because we've now sent it to legal and we're on a path that that's what we accepted pending legal's recommendation. And since you're here, if your recommendation is, uh, you know, tell us what your recommendation is and we'll make a motion if we need to and do something.
Well, I would recommend doing the minimum to get your point across what you want and then refer to the state statutes as amended. Um, the reason being is, is then you can make sure that you're not in conflict with them as easily and it simplifies things for everybody.
I'm thinking that the things that are variables are the electronic digital signs, whether yes or no. So I think that that would need to be clarified as to what we want, because state co- you know, these are the minimal, like where we narrow. Size, I would say even potentially the height could be a narrowing factor if we wanted to do that. So size of the sign, the height of the sign, the zone where it's permitted, um, electronic digital. I think that's probably- does that sound about?
How many feet apart?
No, that's state. Isn't that regulated?
We changed- we changed that.
We made them six hundred feet and state's requirement is five hundred feet.
Yeah, so if we want it.
Five hun- oh, so we made it- we made it further.
So that represents we narrow it. Yeah.
Oh, okay, so then there would be another ni- factor that where we're steering from state code.
We'd be outside the original ordinance.
Yeah, where we're- okay.
And- and if you want them to have to get a new permit every five years from the city, because they're going to have to get one from UDOT, but they wouldn't necessarily have to get one from the city. But if you want to have that remain in there, then that's something that I would spell out.
You know, from an administrative standpoint, I would say take that out, especially if it's tied to anything that says, "If they don't renew their permit, we have to buy the sign."
No, no, that's not that.
But was that something else?
That's only if-
And so a non-conforming sign, just say any non-conforming.
Oh, non-conforming.
And that's if the city prevents the maintenance or requires that the maintenance of the existing sign be discontinued. That's where you've got to buy it back according to this that I've got in front of me. But my- my next question is, is when you say that it has to be removed within three years, would you also have to buy it?
I don't know, but that's already in our code, in the sign code.
Okay.
Non-conforming signs, that's a- it's actually in a- a different piece of sign code that doesn't deal with billboards.
Well, I just-
Well, let me take that- let me rephrase that. So it's in a piece of code that you would not be able to find unless you're just casually scrolling through things and reading it that deals with actually non-conforming buildings and things like that. And then there's an, "Oh, by the way, a couple of sentences and it says signs or billboards, you've got three years to take it out." And I can't answer the question about whether you also have to- you probably have to buy it.
I- I would imagine, um, but.
But just, I don't know.
Well, so non-conforming is state code and a- and now, uh, this is not a legal opinion, but Christian will tell us. So if- if state code says you have to buy it if you force them to remove a non-conforming sign and we have a piece of code that says you have to take it out in three years, I would think the st- if- if we were challenged, the state would step in and say, "Yep, and they got to take it out and now you got to pay them."
I- I think that that's exactly what would happen.
And those payment terms are terrible. It's like you pay them right now. It's not like over five years or when you get around to it. It's like- it's cinched tight.
Isn't there also the option to just not have billboards?
Well, there is that.
And the city limits.
So, right, and we- so we've worked through a lot.
I'm just saying, that's another option.
Right, but I- just to keep us going and- and all that. So we looked at that and we said, "Well, we're going to look at billboard code, because it was recommended that we thought people should be able to have billboards on their property if they wanted them."
So to that end, if we were to put in code that says we will not allow billboards, then we would want to also remove the code that says you have to take it out if it's non-conforming after three years. Because by the- when you adopt that code from three years from that point, every sign by our own ordinance should have to come out.
I- I agree.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh-
And I- and I'll tell you why that's probably there, is because in that code that talks about non-conforming buildings, there's a provision that says when it has been abandoned for- for a year or not used for a year, like a normal building, then- then they don't get their non-conforming status, you know, that grandfathered status. Well, how do you say a building- a- a sign has not been in use, because it just sits there, right? So then they wanted to put some sort of a timeline on that sign and- but if that means we got to buy it, that's problematic.
Yes. Um, so from here, we've got a couple of options, uh, and I think, and so what I'm talking up to is some sort of a motion to move this along. So we have an option that says we take the proposed code that we sent legal for review. We strip it down to the minimum and send it through for another review and- and manage billboards and have some code that way. Or we reconsider this and we- now that we have information in terms of potential numbers and- and so on and where they can and can't be, we can revote and say we- we don't think we want code for those and we're not going to allow. We won't- we don't have to say we're not going to allow them, but we're not going to put any code in place to address billboards, which means that UDOT will not allow billboards along the I fifteen corridor in Parowan City.
So just to clarify something, when looking at the sheet that you made with the distances and the quantities, so from the south end, south city limit to exit seventy-five, and that's the- the southern exit, right? We could potentially have two more.
On the south side, yes. Until they res-
And so then between the two exits-
South side of the freeway, I'm sorry.
Well, no, it says northbound.
Southbound side or southbound?
Um, northbound.
Okay. So on the northbound side, there's the potential for- for ten?
For ten, between south of the city to north of the city.
Right.
But most of those, the six, are after Parowan, correct?
Yes, correct.
So more than likely not advertising for Par- for Parowan, it would be something, who knows, Salt Lake, Beaver, whatever.
Yeah, right. I just- yeah, okay.
Right?
Well, the- so let's put it this way, they- there can be- there can be that many billboards and they can advertise whatever they want.
Right.
Okay. And then, as Dan pointed out, that section on the zoning map in- in that area down towards the, I guess, the south end of town, if that gets annexed, depending on how it's annexed in there, there eventually could be-
More in there.
Several- a billboard every six hundred feet, and I don't know how long that is without.
So as far as the city's perspective, there isn't that many billboards that's really potential and the revenue is very minimal for the city.
Right, right. And I would just also say that, again, that I didn't walk out and measure these and I didn't use a GPS to- to get coordinates of all these signs to see how far they were and go to the corner of some zone or some lot to- to see. So there's the potential that those numbers could move either direction a li- a little bit.
Christian, can I get a on-the-spot legal opinion?
Yeah.
Don't you love that?
I do.
So if our code ha- we have sign ordinance and it never mentions the word billboard, so our code is kind of silent on billboards right now. Does that mean that we don't allow billboards? It never mentions the word billboard and it just restricts signs to the- the- to the zones that we have allow signs in and sizes according to those different zones and things like that. This is where I'm unclear. If I have somebody come in, and I have had people come in and say, "Can I put in a billboard?" I'm like, "Well, we don't have any billboard code and the city's position administratively has been no." But I don't- I mean, if it's silent, I don't know if that means we prevent it.
Well, you've got the sign ordinance that says you can have this big of a sign. Is that right?
Yeah.
So that would say, you know, in these, uh, highway services areas, you can only have a sign that's, uh, a hundred square feet.
Are we calling a billboard a sign? Because, I mean, is it by definition the same thing?
Well, I mean, you- You could.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it doesn't say specifically that it excludes billboards, there's- there's an- people could interpret that to include signs, uh, or billboards, um.
They would just be limited to the sizes that are in there, and that- and it's pretty restrictive, I mean-
If- if it limits them to the sizes, you know, then you can say, "Well, technically, this sign in the highway services area would be a billboard, but it's still restricted to this size." Because there- there's an ambiguity, because you don't have a definition, either specifically incorporating it or excluding it. But you're restricting the size, so is a hundred square foot sign a billboard? That- that's the ambiguity.
So maybe for the purposes of, I'm not trying to lead you to a point, but in my opinion, I think it would be nice to have something that says, "We allow billboards under a certain circumstance or we do not allow billboards," but it actually mentions the word billboards and whether we allow them or not and when and what. I- I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but-
Well, that's what we have.
I hate the ambiguity.
Not have now, but that's what we've written and submitted.
Right, right, right.
We've taken those guidelines out of state code and are looking- well, we've already talked about all those and said we're good.
Yep.
So if that's what we want to do, then the other consideration would be at the legal opinion, have them take a look at that and see which code they might want to recommend stripping out. That might be state code that we don't need a piece to address that.
I was going to say, as far as making a determination as to whether a billboard is a sign under that, uh, ordinance, you could very easily just do another little tiny subpart that says, uh, "A billboard which is a sign that is bigger than this is not, uh, a sign for purposes of this ordinance, uh, or any signs, you know, because you don't want to restrict the signs the same way you do a billboard, because then the gas stations at either end of town's going to get screwed up."
Yep.
Um, so you can just put in there a billboard which is defined as anything larger than this.
And I- and I'm glad you mentioned that, because our current gas station signs pretty much look like billboards of, you know, when you talk about size and heights and all these things. So it would be nice to actually delineate what is a sign for purposes of advertising the- what is on the property
Yeah.
and a billboard which is, generally speaking, going to advertise something that is not on that piece of property.
So, okay, so just in the piece of code that we're writing or considering, I've called them all billboard signs, so there's no confusion as to what they are. Now, UDOT and their definition of sign or outdoor advertising, it's like a sign. And then everything else is regulated by size, height, location, things like that. So if you called UDOT and said, "Hey, there's a sign on the freeway," they'd go, "Oh, yeah, and that's permit numbers such and such." But the reality is it's a big bill- it's a- But the reality is it's a big, it's a big billboard. So where do we wanna go from here? I can take another look at what I've written to see what I can scrub out of it.
Well, and, and instead of jumping into the other sign code and putting that little disclaimer at the end of it, we could put a disclaimer at the end of this one, another little section that just says, uh, anything deemed a billboard under this ordinance, uh, is not a sign pursuant to this ordinance.
Be good.
So Dan, to address, address your concern, are you envisioning another piece of code or a modification to a code to, to clarify something?
No, I lo- what, what Christian just said, I think satisfies that because in the end of the billboard code, you say, for, this is what a billboard is and this modifies this, this is what this code does. This does not reference what is going on in the site.
There's no apply to signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that right?
That, tha- that makes it clear that, you know, what, what the billboard code is talking about is billboards.
You'd have to reference that sign code.
And reference the sign code. Yep.
Comments, questions?
Well, one other thing that I would do is I would define what a billboard is.
I, yeah.
And, and, and.
It's there.
Yeah, it's there.
Well, no, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, uh, you, you've got what it is, but you wanna look at the sign code and have your billboard go from this big to this big. It can be anywhere in this range and that's it, because any lower would be a sign that is dealt with by the sign ordinance, so that we don't run into an issue with the gas station signs of that nature.
One other thing, and I was debating whether to br- talk about this or not, but I'd rather get ahead of it now than be into a lawsuit later with Yescow or something. It seems like in our conversations with, when we had the, the land use seminar, there was conversation about, you gotta be careful not to infringe on free speech.
Yep.
Um, if we limit digital signs, is that one of those things that infringes on, didn't they talk about that?
No.
I don't think they did talk about that.
I don't recall.
Okay, okay. I, I, I'd rather bring it up and, and say, and everybody say no, than rather than, oh yeah, that's right, maybe that could be a concern.
Um. If you hold a second, I should be able to find it to read.
Okay, cool.
I think that.
Maybe that was a conversation I had with Justin a couple of weeks ago and he said something like that, I can't remember.
Well, you're, you're not restricting their ability to express their speech. You're just restricting the format. And it's, it's a more expensive format, so, but I, I don't think that that would be infringement on free speech.
I still think in your consideration, you need to consider, is this worth it to Parawan City to be involved in billboards?
When we talk about the five-year renewal of a permit, is there a fee involved in that?
UDOT has permit fees, Parawan City, I think this probably says a fee as assigned by the city council.
And if you're gonna do that, I would keep it exactly like in line with the state, really close.
Well, there's that, and I'm also thinking, you know, we have a fee schedule in the city and there's, there's a, we just have a fee for a building permit. We might, I don't know if we need a separate one for a, do we need a different one for a sign?
Well, I'd look and see what the, the state does, because you don't wanna be too far out of line with that, so.
Well, I'll check, but the point is, is the state probably has a fee schedule as well that changes. So if we refer to the fee schedule, are we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to pick and, I don't, I don't know, I don't wanna read this whole entire thing to you, but, um, this was from last summer, I believe, um, the electronic signs and digital billboard ordinances, um, put out by Scenic Utah. And one of the things that they address is regulating off-premise billboards and on-premise business signs, and one of the things that they pick up is the digital. And that they're basically saying that we need to review our ordinance and if we want to prohibit them, then we need to make sure it's in the language. Um, so it's not, language needs to be added to your existing ordinance stating explicitly that digital and electric billboards or the conversion of an existing billboard is prohibited in all whatever zones that we, so if we decide, then we need to write that in. And it was a toss-up. Some of us were yes to and no to those signs.
Yeah, it was three-two last week, last time.
Yeah.
So we voted for it.
We voted for digital, right.
Yeah.
So that's been settled.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, whether we like it or not, the, the majority thinks that, uh, we should allow them. So that's kinda, we're not gonna revisit that again, I don't believe. So I, I think from this point, I would just, I would entertain a motion that, uh, I'll revisit the, the, the code we submitted to legal and see if we can strip out any state requirements and move forward with a piece of code that simply has, um, the city requirements in it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to have you revise or revisit the proposed billboard ordinance that was previously submitted and with the changes that we've spoke about.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All, anybody not in favor? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. I was getting bored at home. So, all right, next, next item is just a quick update on, uh, the RV park code. That went to city council last week. It wasn't, they, it went into the work meeting, wasn't ready to, quite to be voted on yet, so that'll come up in the next or another meeting. Then the next item on the agenda, update to water code revision, same status as the RV park stuff. It's, it wasn't quite administratively ready to go in, so they talked about it in the working meeting to pave the way so it can go in an action meeting. Dan, go ahead.
You can tell I wanna say something. Um, yeah, we, we just need to put it in ordinance format, um, and, and Callie was sick that week and was doing, she did a, she did an incredible job from home, sick, to get the things on the agenda that we did, but we didn't have time to get the, um, things into an ordinance format, working with, um, legal to get it ready. So it, it'll be, but the public hearing was had and, um, and there was, there was good, there was discussion on the RV code. Um, and, I mean, I don't wanna speculate, I'm not sure how that's gonna play out. There, there wasn't really any discussion on the water code, that's kind of a no-brainer. It was pretty simple what we wanna do. Now, that's actually what I wanna comment about. We're finally gonna get the, the water code where we want it with the language removed from water development fee and so forth. However, we, we've been made aware that, um, starting in October, there was a law that was passed in twenty nineteen that as of October twenty twenty-three, cities of a certain size, and it's, the threshold is the three thousand three hundred, and we're just below that.
They're talking about us.
It forces the city to go to a new way to calculate the amount of water that's required to be brought to the city. You have to go to a ERC format, which, I mean, formula, which stands for equivalent residential connections. And you have, you can only require developers to bring the amount of water that is calculated of actual use by the city per ERC. And that's a big push. Again, this is, of course, the developers pushing to get away from the state recommended, um, calculations, which is what our code references, is the state recommended calculation, which is point four-five for a residence. And then there's a formula for irrigation use, which is four acre feet per acre, per irrigated acre. And then, of course, there's stock watering and then commercial industrial. As soon as we go over the threshold of thirty-three hundred feet, we have to go to this ERC formula. And we're working with our engineer on updating our water master plan. And so we're not exactly sure, but in a draft format, that's gonna be probably point four-two, somewhere between point four-two up to point five is all we'll be able to require a developer to bring us per ERC. So an, an equivalent residential connection is gonna look like, on a single family residence, that's an ERC. A commercial residence, I mean, a commercial use, depending on the use, is gonna come up to so many equivalent ERCs. An apartment complex will come up to so many ERCs. And that's what we'll need to update our, our code to reflect, because that's all we'll be able to require developers to bring us. And we're in danger if we require them to bring us more that we can get sued and, and.
Isn't that pretty much what our code says right now?
No, our code says, it refers to the state code, which is that those old, the.
Well, it refers to their calc's.
Their calculations. They're getting away from that entirely.
But their calc's is where the ERC came from.
Well.
The way you can.
It doesn't reference ERC, it references, um, that point four-five for the residential, but that's a little different than an ERC.
Not much, but, okay.
But, 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 so right now, we look at it and we say, we have a lot and you have the residence, which is the point four-five.
Right.
And then you have the irrigated acreage. Well, now, the way that they're calculating it, wh- way they're moving us to with that new, is the entire lot will be a, will be an ERC.
Oh, with no irrigation added?
That includes irrigation, because, cause they're calculating it based on our actual use, citywide.
Oh, my gosh, okay, got it.
Including irrigation.
Doesn't it take in count what is irrigatable? I mean, it's not under asphalt, cement, any.
No, cause they're, they're just looking at total city usage, dividing it by our ERCs. And so that includes irrigation.
Right, but not irrigatable?
Under the old way of doing it.
It was irrigatable.
You, you could include that formula for irrigatable. So in other words, and what you would say is, we need so much water because the state, because the state water rights division says a house uses this much and an irrigatable acre uses that much. That's the old methodology that we've been able to use. The new one says you have to take the total usage, the actual pumped water and of course, spring water as well, but your total culinary usage divided by the number of, of residences, equivalent residences. And that includes all indoor use and all, all outdoor use. And our current usage, even once you adjust for the fact that we have a bunch of customers that are, that, that are on the PI system, if you assume every single customer and you calculate it based on them not being on the PI system, it still only comes to point four-two up to point five.
That's our actuals.
That's our actuals. And that's what you have to base the, the formula on is your actuals. Once you go over that threshold of thirty-three hundred population.
Yes, and they're already calculating in like commercial buildings and things like that.
Because every commercial building is, is calculated back to an ERC, and that's all factored in.
And you said that was happening in October?
October twenty twenty-three and over the threshold of thirty-three hundred, which we're just knocking on the door. We'll probably be over that within the next year, so. That's in the state code. Oh, I don't know. It does not say, I, I don't know. I mean, we'd have to look at the code, but this is just going off of what Erin has said, thirty-three hundred is your population, so. Whether, whether, whether that's a census or an estimated, cause a census is only done every ten years. So I'm not sure.
Well, it's interesting because they, you know, everything else they do, it's, your city and counties are classed based on, based on population, but they're, all the cutoffs are like, you know, ten thousand, five thousand, three thousand, eight thousand, fifty thousand. There's no thirty-three hundred cutoff.
Well, there's actually like four tiers within that law that was done in twenty nineteen. It's just the one that makes, the one that affects us is once we bump over that tier.
Okay.
And so my point is, is we've, we're finally getting the water code where we want it. And, um, potentially at the end of this year, we're gonna need to adopt it to, to that new language.
So that shouldn't be too difficult, the way, the way it's written, I think that's.
It's just, just, yeah, just, we're just gonna have to touch, you know, some of these same things, subdivision code in fourteen and in chapter seven where we talk about culinary water requirements.
Right.
But that's what we're just getting done, amending.
Okay.
So just, just to put that on everybody's radar, I don't think we can run away from that. We can always just not do it and then wait till we get sued, but I'd rather not get down that road.
Yeah.
That depends how, yeah, okay.
Cause that gets expensive.
Yeah.
I don't like lawsuits. I hate, there's no checks I hate worse than writing checks to lawyers that are suing us, cause that's where a lot of the money goes.
Christian, we weren't talking about you.
That's fine. It is what it is.
All right, um, so any questions on the water code? All right, next item, uh, Conex box ordinance, and that's just an, that would be an update. Tony?
Yeah, so, um, still working on that. Um, I think, I believe I've made some good progress and I found some different ways to, uh, think about things and to, uh, kinda rework the ordinances based on what you want. Um, still kind of, uh, leading back to the three main things that were, that were, that were in question, um, as far as what we were looking at. One of them was that using a building material or building as a structure, which is, I've been finding is very difficult to find, especially for comparative rural areas. Um, there is not much out there, especially in wording that. I think I have a way, um, to, I can come back for a proposal for that. So the other questions, um, I guess more that, that I would have for this committee, if we continually want to still, uh, discuss the, how, how many, the amount of boxes and the size. So those are the other couple of questions that I wasn't sure if you would like me to address in, in that or.
Can I say something, Larry? And I really don't wanna talk too much in these things that take away conversation from the commission, but, um, the, uh, the property owner, Mike Villan- Villanova, who, who asked for the review of his barnumium that had that, which was kinda what spurred this. Um, he called me, as, as you had directed to, and said, you know, I'm not sure I wanna die on this hill, wh- where is this going? And, um, and I says, well, the planning commission is working through details to, to consider a recommendation to, to change it. And he says, well, where does it go after that? And I says, it's, it's gotta go to city council. And he says, well, what are they gonna do? And I said, well, the last thing I'm gonna do is form an, is try to guess, uh, an opinion, but I, I don't really know how warm the city council is, cause this was quite a war that was fought. And maybe they wanna consider it, maybe they don't. And, and I, he, I'm wondering, and what I said to him is, you know, I could bring it up, we could put it on the agenda, it's just, not for a decision, but just for a discussion and see how open the city council is to even entertaining it. Because if they're not, and we continue to just spend a lot of time and resources debating it and their intention is not to adjust, not to even consider it at all. You know what I mean? I, I don't know, but, but I had, I talked to the mayor about maybe putting that on the next city council agenda to discuss. Um, I mean, we have a member of the city council here, I don't know what your opinion is. Um, I mean, we have a member of the city council here, I don't know what your opinion is about that, without saying how you're going to vote or anything, but maybe the disposition. Do you think that would be a good idea to bring it up and just see if the city council's open to the idea? Before we spend any more time on it?
Speculate.
You don't want to speculate? Well, do you think it's a good idea to bring it to the city council and just see if they're even open to it?
Well, sure, you can always bring it and there'd be a discussion.
I, I think that the, the way that at least I'm viewing this, and I'm thinking that we're, as a panel viewing this, is not adjusting necessarily what our Conex shipping container code is right now. Meaning, that the code that's written is referring to them being used as a storage shed on a property. And that, that would be the twenty footer on a certain acreage. I think what we're looking at is being able to use, I think it's three different sizes that these come in. I think it's ten, twenty, and forty foot containers. To utilize them as a building structure or as building material. Whether it be as what that family wanted to do in the, the barn o medium thing. Then, I had also brought in suggestions on, you know, they could be utilized as an accessory dwelling unit. It would be a determination of whether we as a city want them completely cladded, so you can't tell, partially cladded. Being able to use the Conex as a structural-like fizz in Cedar City has used them to build the soda shop in a business. So, I, I, I guess I view them as two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think from, from what I've found, again, it's, uh, I know it's a matter of wording and differentiation, but the, the, the term that keeps getting thrown around is used as building material. Um, a Conex box is not a building material, it's used for, if you use it as part of the building material, it's habitation. So, it's not using it as built, that, that, the term that keeps getting thrown out there is used as building material. But that encompasses inhabit, inhabiting the Conex box, so that's.
Which our current code prohibits.
Prohibits that, so it would be changing that portion if we're considering that, and that's what we're looking into is. And really, what that comes down to, back to your point, uh, Dan, is it, it would, it has to comply with Perron City's building permits and occupancy permits. It's not really this organization that determines that. We can put the thing in and say, if you're going to inhabit this, if it's going to be used, the permanent one, for habitation, it has to comply with Perron City. So Perron City is the one, under their building ordinances and their building occupancy, that they have to determine whether you're going to allow that, not this council. So, that's, if we put into our code, it's available for habitation, that means it has to go to a different thing. That way, we're not trying to figure out if it's lawful if somebody lives in it or not, and if it's used for a building or not, that's, that's not our concern. That's actually the building permits and building codes and building occupancy permits. All that lies under the city that way.
So, unless you want to go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, I get that, and if if we as a commission decide to make a recommendation that Conexes should become habitable, that's the code we would write, and that would go to the city council. And then the city council would say, yeah, we agree, and we would put it into code. The issues that we're talking about, about an occupancy permit and a building permit, those are standard procedures already in place in the city, there's no new code for that. That, that says, okay, it's allowable, say, as a residence. The building, we're going to look at it, we're going to look at the plans, we're going to analyze the, the plans and go, yeah, we might not like it, but we agree that it works in, in, as a residence. And then it's up to the, the city's engineers in Iron County to do the inspections to determine if it meets the code. And the code that would ultimately govern that is the, uh, International Residential Code, the IRC. So, you got to get there, but we can't get there un- until we as a commission decide whether or not to make some recommendation to the city council. So, that's all we're trying to do. Those, those other things that are being referred to are already in place and would be applicable.
I would like it, oh, sorry. I would like it to go to city council and just, you know, have them give a, you know, hey, is this something that we're looking at? Or, I would hate Tony to waste all this time if it's just going to go there and be like flat out.
Shut down.
Yeah.
Well, it's, so, I'm not opposed to something like that. But to take something to city council, do you want to brief it to city council? Because we don't want to just take something in there with a question, you know, on one line that says, are you okay with us living in Conexes?
Yeah.
We're going to have to present some pros and cons and some backup codes, some location examples, maybe some pictures. You know, to do the, the, uh, the challenge before us justice, we, we've got to do that.
And, and to be honest, that's where I've been having the most difficult, um, time, because if you're talking allowing that, then you're jumping into the bigger cities, like even the, the Salt Lake, or, or some of those that are building, you know, high-rise apartment buildings of these things. That's, and, and I, and, and it's not a comparable thing. In the rural communities, it's not, the, the laws are not strict.
We cannot, per state code, we cannot, other than like in a historical preservation district or, um, subdivisions can have HOAs, they can talk about design criteria, criteria. We can't, we, we can't regulate design criteria and say we, you know, other, like I say, than in the historical preservation committee. So, if you allow it as a building material, and then somebody wants to build this Lego-looking structure, which then everybody says, how the heck did you allow that to happen? Because, because we couldn't prevent that, other, if it's, if it fits engineering and the, you know, um, International Residential Code, and, and an engineer says, yes, that's structurally good, and the county says, okay, we're going to hold them to the IRC. Um, right now, if you do, if you understand the way our code is, it says that no building and no living in them, it restricts that. So, that's what I'm saying, I, I think that. I just wonder if, I mean, like, that soda place on fifty-six, personally, I think it looks really cool. I think, I think it looks awesome. I'll go there and get soda out there and it's out of my way. But I don't know if that's what the, the current governing body, legislative body sees as, I just don't know if, how they see, but I'm getting, I'm getting the feeling that maybe that, they're not going to like that, but I don't know. I, like I said, I don't want to put that in there, I, I don't want to guess what they're thinking, but if they're going to, we're going to spend all this time, and then they're just going to shut it down and say, we don't even want to go there? We don't want to let the public clamor get all riled back up again? Um, then we may have wasted all of this time for nothing, so, I don't know. That's the only reason I brought it up. I, I apologize if I've.
No, no.
I would, Tony, I would work with you to put together a presentation, because I have, something I have put together. Uh, but, um, so we could go over that and add to it.
I think if we do have a presentation, we need to, to discuss it with this committee first to make sure we're all, because I don't know that we're all in the same.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I, I agree.
As far as opinions about what should move forward, so if we're going to review something, um, but you're definitely, I, you know, welcome any, any other co-changes or whatever.
Well, and I really didn't want to have a big presentation, I just wanted to say, are you guys willing to consider anything at all? Do you want to, you know, let the planning commission come forward with, with a recommendation that's going to be well thought out, and they can have all kinds of thoughts about that, or if, if you're planning on just shutting it down to, like a hard no on anything to do with storage containers? Then let us know, I mean, now, without a vote, I just, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Well, so, my feeling on that is just slightly different. I hate to take something to city council half-baked.
Right.
And, and so, if you just go, do you want Conexes or not? Again, and then you just go, no, we don't want them, well, you're done. There's, there's no opportunity at that point to stand up and say, well, here's the pros and here's the cons, and, and now tell us how you feel about it. Because, right now, if we just go in cold, we're just dealing with some, you know.
I agree.
Preconceived notions.
And I'm more than happy to let the process play out, I just, you know.
Well, I, I like the concept of what you're saying, but I, I'm not saying we need a huge presentation, but.
No, but I think that visuals sometimes.
You know, what I would like to see in, in something like that, besides the visuals and things, I would like to see some factual evidence that here's some that are being used at, as residences in places that, you know, that they are, or, so to speak. And maybe some snippets of the code. You call us the place where you, this picture is on the internet and go, hey, so, what code did you use? You know, what provisions of the IRC were considered to, to get this in? And come up with some tidbits like that. I'm not saying we need to nail it down, so it's a, a tight fit, but I think we need to get into the ballpark, so that we're not just waving our hands and saying, people do it, people do it, I've seen it somewhere. We need to get pretty specific about that. And this, and at the same time, consider any unintended consequences that is, if we start allowing them as commercial buildings. Then, if we want that, that's great, but if we don't, you know, imagine things like, you know, Conexes down Main Street on some empty lot, and somebody's selling coffee out of a Conex, because we somehow turned that on in our code. That might not be a bad thing, I mean, that might be awesome, depending on, on how they did it, but.
Well, I think there'd be other, oh, zoning, like the historical district and things like that.
Right.
Come into play.
Sure.
Right. Well, I know, I, I believe this code wouldn't disturb the historical district, I mean, I think the historical district would shut those off, straight out, there's no options there, but other areas. And, and so, do we want to do that? Can we get into the city council agenda with somebody to, you know, present something, or is that a terrible idea?
Or, as Tony was saying, you were bringing up that you think that some of the panel may not even be interested in that?
Yeah, I, I would just, my, my personal suggestion is, I would be more with what Dan suggested, if he's going to take it to the council or stuff like that, just as a super high level, are they interested in revising it?
Yeah, just so you know, this is being considered.
We're not wasting our time, because I think any presentation or anything like that should come to us first and then be prepared.
Right, withhold judgment, but this is something that is being looked at, but please withhold just judgment.
Yeah.
And if they're like, you go tell them.
So, you're, you're saying that maybe we put together a presentation, as a body, we look at it, and then, then we go, and if.
Then you go there and tell them. Because it's going to take some time to word, it's going to take some time to wordsmith the code, to get it where the planning commission feels comfortable. I think it's going to take some time.
Oh, sure.
Well, I do too, I, I believe that, and, and, uh, but if we're going to, if we do some sort of a presentation to city council, I'm thinking it's, it's max, at the very most, five slides in huge fonts, this is not a one-hour presentation.
No.
This is a, this is just a quick, here's what one looks like, here's some places that are doing it, there is some code to support that, that we've found. Or, we can't find any code. And if we can't find any code, I don't want to recommend it to begin with. If there is no code out there for residential use of these in single-family dwellings or something like that, we're, we're swimming upstream too far.
If you have it, and if you know any, let me know.
Well, and I know that's where we are, so.
The single-family thing is the, is the harder.
I had a discussion with.
There's one in Glendale.
With Tony.
Glendale? Okay.
Where?
Glendale.
Utah?
Yeah, right by my sister's house. That's how I know.
One Conex or, or one city?
There's a couple of them stacked up.
Yeah, or they'll have, like, the two, and they'll build a middle, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think out in Burl, they're putting up two homes, I, I'll double check them, you know.
That's a different plan.
Those, those are my, that's the hardest part that I've been finding, is the rural areas, to find actually a single resident. Most of the stuff are more commercial, business, things like that, that aren't dealing with what we're talking about. So, thank you.
Are you strictly going to look at residential, or are you going to look at any, like, commercial use or business use, or?
That, that's, that's all, uh, that's, again, with that, it was, we'd have to completely revise our code, because commercial and resident, our, our current code is just temporary and permanent. So, there isn't a, there isn't a distinction between residential and commercial, so we'd have to completely revise the code to split that out.
It just says storage containers, and it was looking at them in the context of storage.
Correct, that's exact, and it says that in there, that, you know, they can't be stacked, there's only one, and all these, they're very, they were very, you can tell it was very specific on what they wanted and very limited, um, to size, how many, you know, how many are on the lot for certain time periods, even the story, the temporaries, and, and so, this, if we go down this route, it's completely redoing the code, splitting everything out into temporary, commercial, residential, and then defining everything from there and making all new ordinance. If we, if we go down that path.
Well, I would entertain a motion at this point, to maybe answer the question of whether we want to go to city council and see what they're thinking before we go any farther.
So, when you say that, you mean to come to the council with a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, before you write ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I, I've just seen.
But you're going to present this to your body here before you go to city council?
Correct.
Okay, so you maybe ought to clarify.
So, it wouldn't be the upcoming city council, it'd be the one after the next planning and zoning.
Yeah, well, it could be.
If, if, or it could be.
Or two down the road, whatever it is, you know, it's, it's not a rush.
I, I've just seen, I've seen planning commissions take six months to a year working on something, and it gets the legislative body, gets shut down, and people are like, why am I on the commission? Frustrated and like, you know.
Yeah. Well, I get that, and again, I, five slides max, that don't, you know, this can't take more than a, the research might take a little bit, but the slideshow can't take more than about a half a day to get it, to pull together. I mean, if we're spending more time on it than that, then we're, we're overcooking it for what we want it for. This is just enough to, here's what our code is now. It strictly prohibits using these as residences. And we've been kicking it around for a long time, and here's what we found, and do you support it or not, kind of a deal. And if we get a, not only no, but heck no, then, okay. Then we're done, till somewhere down the road. You know, there's always the chance that a year or two or three down the road, that state code is going to do something with those, and then we can, you know.
Just comply with that.
Well, and, and then.
Yeah, the legislature's in session now.
Yes.
Anything can happen.
So, if I don't get a motion, it dies, and then, and we just. Anybody want to make a crack at it?
How do we word it?
I. Is Jerry trying to go for it?
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to make a motion then, that we do a presentation that we can present to the city council for the use of Conex boxes as potential residential structures. Is that, is it?
And commercial, I think.
And commercial.
And that it'll be re- reviewed by the planning commission prior to.
Okay, and it'll be reviewed by the planning commission prior to presentation to the city council.
I can second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it, thank you.
What, what I can, I'll just make a, if we presented it today to the current council, I could probably tell you it would be turned down.
Well, yeah, that's what I say, I, we, we owe it to.
I could almost count the votes, even as we speak. But that's yet another story.
Well, yeah, and that's why, I mean, I don't, you don't want to get the cart before the horse, and, I mean, there's, there's a proper role of this body and a proper role of that body. But, man, to waste months of work, if you, if you, if you know that it's a, you're beating a dead horse, then, you know what I mean, I don't know. That, so, I mean, I hate to go back and forth and take straw poles and, I mean, get weird like that, but if there's something like this that we know has been so, so hard fought over in the past, and it may just be a, a dead issue before we start, then.
So, where were you, where were you when we were talking about billboard code? You didn't see anything like that?
I don't know. I don't know if that was quite as, uh, heated in prior discussions, um, but yeah, I would not hear that.
I'm kidding. Okay. Moving right along. Our next item is member reports, and so we'll do like we do and start with Jamie.
Um, so with hard surfaces, I did look into the city council meeting and it was just tabled. And so maybe on our next planning and zoning, we can vote to bring that back to the city council, cuz it's been to lawyers twice and everything like that.
Has it been tabled by us or tabled by?
It was tabled by city council.
City council.
So we just need to get city council to.
Mm-hmm.
So Dave?
(laughing).
Or Dan?
Was it?
It was tabled. It was on the agenda and then on December seventh, I believe.
You were on the phone and think out with COVID.
Yeah, you were out.
I was out, yes, okay.
Yeah.
So can you see if we can get it back onto the agenda again?
It's gonna be the mayor.
Yeah, that's the mayor's agenda.
Her agenda, yep.
Please.
We wanna make sure that we've, we would look into maybe why it was tabled and make sure we, we don't bring it back before we're at, before, like, did they have a question? Or, I can't remember the details.
Nobody was there to present. Larry wasn't there, I wasn't there, nobody was there.
Oh, is that why it was tabled? Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure we, we addressed the reason why it was tabled.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Okay, um, Jerry?
No, I do not.
No vacation report?
Yeah, no vacation report.
Okay. Tony?
I'd.
Yeah. So Tony's been working on this Connex code and doing research. He's, and he's about sick of it. He won't say that, but.
(laughing).
I know that he's tired of it. So Heather?
No.
Nothing? Okay, and Dan?
No other than I have an extra book.
So did anybody, Jerry, did you get a book?
I got one prior, yes. I was given one.
So everybody else got one?
When I first was appointed.
Was it Tony or Jake? I ca- did we have both, Tony and Jake?
Where, when?
At the land use seminar.
No, Weston was there.
Jake, Jake, was Jake? No, Jake didn't show up.
No, Jake was, it was just Weston.
Maybe we could give that to Jake, then.
There we go.
Jake, I think, has one. Didn't he?
Weston was there.
Yeah, Weston was there.
Yeah.
Tony has one?
(laughing).
Yeah, so I was just told to make sure I grabbed, even though I already had one.
We can keep it at the city office and give it to the next person.
Yes, yes. So, that's the.
Yeah, we probably wanna make sure Jake's got one, and I think we're, we're all covered. It would be good if, I don't remember who on the city council may or may not have been there, and they need a book. Matt was not there, but we got Matt, Matt a book.
Jamie, did you get a second one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sharon wa- wasn't there either?
No, I just have one.
Oh, okay.
I just got one.
Wait, we can get one to Sharon?
Yeah, that'd be.
And did you call on me?
Hmm?
No, he didn't call on you yet.
I thought he said Dan, but it was right when you started talking, so I was.
Oh.
I wasn't sure if it was my turn to talk, so.
It's your turn.
Left and right.
It's your turn now.
Okay, so, um, just thank you to everybody who came to that. I, I, if, you, it was, it was awesome, and I'm glad we had such a good turnout from Parowan City. Um, thank you to, um, Larry, and I think Molly gets some credit is for getting them to come here. That was, that was invaluable. Um, two, just to give you a heads up, we had a, um, a home occupation permit that was filed, and as part of that, then there's notice sent out to the surrounding neighbors in case they want to, um, protest, and we have had one that was filed, and we have active protests on it. So our, our code says that it can come to planning and zoning for, to hear that and make a decision. And I would like to bring it to planning and zoning and give you guys a chance to fill in. I like the idea of multiple people looking at it. It's kind of a, kind of a land use. It's an interesting situation. It's a gym on three hundred east, a home gym, but it's not inside their home. It's in a separate building in the backyard. Um, neighbors are concerned, um, about the potential impacts, so that'll be, it won't be, the, the, the comment period is through the end, the twenty-sixth of this month. And so my guess is, is if the home, the applicant wants to bring it, then we'll bring it to planning commission for your guys' consideration. Also, we're working on an annexation, which will come to planning commission at some point. It's gotta go now through all the, all the steps. The ci- the city council actually hears it first, but just so you know, that's on the, um, on the map, and it's, it's a parcel that was actually split into two tax areas by the former, um, when the city council just created an annexation all along two hundred south. And so we just started the process with that property owner. And, um, the other thing that I was bringing up is coming soon will be, um, a plan review of the ACE hardware, um, area development. Um, will be coming down the pipe pretty soon. And I'm sure Larry was gonna probably tell you those things too, but we're moving on some stuff.
No. So in regards to that home occupation permit, just know that, that there is some Parawan code. I don't know the number off the top of my head for home occupation permits. It's a couple pages.
Does that encompass business? I mean, you're conducting a business out of their home. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
What zone do they live in?
They live in an R two. It's in the blue. R two or R three?
I think I can tell you two.
Probably that good.
It is, R two.
Yep.
You're familiar with it, Jim?
Or R one A. If it's blue, it's R one A.
It's, I thi- I believe it's that ye- light, light yellow.
Light yellow, R two A.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, R two.
So bone up on your, uh, on your, on your, um, on the code, if you have any reading time. Um, you know, consider things like, you know, parking impact, um, things like that. Um, this is kind of an interesting one because it's, it's administration. It's, it's not, it's not a business. It's home occupation. Let me just put it that way. So read up on our home occupation stuff and we'll, we'll, uh, um, hear it. So. I see, uh.
And also if we.
I see Christians' wheels turning there.
Very slowly.
(laughing).
So, um, if we get that, uh, address or something a week or so before we have our meeting where that's presented, if people wanna, if we wanna drive by and look at it, that's always a good thing to do.
Yeah, there's a, there's like, for lack of a better way of describing it, it's kinda like a container. It's very rectangular building at the far back of the residential lot, and it's, they set it up to do, you know, um, one-on-one trainings, and then also maybe even like, like, like yoga, um, um, uh, strength training, um, potential talking about having classes. Uh, there were some posts on social media, so it's, it's drawing a lot of attention and.
Are there fees charged for the use of this facility?
I, I go there. Can I say anything about that?
Sure, I mean, we're just, it's just coming. I mean, we're not hearing it yet, but that's, it's on discussion.
I was like. Just like annually. Yeah. So obviously I would have a conflict of interest if I came here. I can vote.
And you'd wanna declare that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would definitely declare that. So, yeah, it's just, um, across the street from like the swimming pool over in that area. Um, and it, she just does like weight training out of it, and so right now, she's just taking single clients or like if you're married, two clients at a time. She's not doing any yoga or anything like that. She's just kinda considered to do individualized training. Um, but it's in like a little workspace in the very, very back of her, of her lot.
So, so there's a question like, is home occupation have to be in the home? Or if it's a separate building, is that now a business operating in a residential? So these are kinda some of the things that is.
Yes.
Yeah, or as an acc- accessory to the house, you know?
Is this an accessory? Is, you know, and, and we'll definitely, you know, let the, the people, or at least read their com- their objection and consider what they're saying, and is that valid?
Mm-hmm.
And, and then, of course, would let the, um, the, the business, the home occupation applicant, you know, make their, um.
Considering, I mean, I had to go through this.
Fifteen point six, way at the bottom.
Yeah, and, um, I believe.
In which area? Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it would be a conditional use, so that's why I was asking, what zone?
But that's in agricultural.
Pardon me?
She had agricultural district. Go R, R two.
Yeah, she's R two.
Fifteen thirty-two. Fifteen thirty-two. That one, fifteen, go down one more, yep.
Fifteen thirty.
And then, and now we can go down to conditional uses. So home occupation is a conditional use?
But I believe that the definition, I don't know, I, I believe it has to be connected to the house. I know that in my process of trying to go through having a home business, a home occupation, um, and on top of that, uh, there is the rule two. I don't know if she has other people teaching classes, but that's not allowed either. She can't have employees.
Right, you're not wrong.
So if we look at number fifty that Judy just brought up, and this is the definition section, so maybe we're.
Within, yeah.
Chris- Christian a question here in a minute, I think. So now, if Judy, you could take us to fifteen.
And, and before she leaves, you'll notice that it also says not to exceed twenty-five percent of the total ground area of the home, implying that it's within the home.
Right.
Yeah.
So again, this was kind of, I thought this was a good, would be a good exercise for this body, cuz this is, this is a little odd, so.
We don't do math.
Well, and I know that one of the, when I was here, you know, cuz I spent about a year trying to find a pro- house, and one of the houses I looked at, um, was only nine hundred square feet. It's across the street from, um, next to the guy with the tiny house and by the LDS churches. Um, and there was a Connex box, and I wanted to flip that Connex box and attach it to the house and make the, encase it, and then make my grimming shop in there. And between historical, the Connex box laws, and then, you know, I knew I had to attach it to the home for it to be con- yeah, viable, to meet all the criterias.
So I guess we gotta be careful not to actually hear this before the time to hear it, but I just wanted to put it on your radar.
Well, let's, let's just take a quick look at fifteen point six zero because that is the code for home occupations. And I, it seems to me that. Yes.
Fifteen sixty?
Mm-hmm.
Only within the structures on the premises and shall not exceed.
Yeah, see, that's different. Christian, that's where I wanna, would love an opinion.
Where are we looking at?
Yeah, so B says it, well, you can read.
See, that now makes it almost seem like you could do it, cuz it says within structures on the premises.
Right. Right. So we have a definition that doesn't agree with our code.
Right, it doesn't agree with the conditions. Within said structures. In C. Of the home. Uh, can, can we go to the point where it says if it's, if it's.
Twenty-five percent of the total ground floor area of the home, but not more than fifty percent of the permitted area. Where twelve per, huh?
Oh, item C.
So you could calculate twenty-five percent of the home and then apply that within structures on the premises. That could be one way you interpret that as well. So if your home is a thousand square feet, twenty-five percent would be two hundred and fifty square feet, and as long as it didn't go over two hundred and fifty square feet within structures on the premises, now it almost seems like you could maybe apply that to a separated building. That's why.
That, that's for just inventory and supplies.
Well, it's home occupation, so it doesn't, I, I see what you're saying.
I don't think.
Go, go down to where it, it talks about if there's, um, if there's, um, a we go back down just a little bit, it says neighboring notification, and then it says, um,
applicants.
Um, must inform of the opportunity to comment upon the application in a meeting of planning commission. No, that's not where it is. It's, maybe it's up in the, uh, go back up to the, to the top, uh, right there, um, in, in O two O. It, the applicant is not protested by any property party within three hundred feet. And then it goes on, and then it talks about if it's pro- okay. In the event that the home occupation permit is denied or referred to the planning commission by the building administrator, requires restrictions imposed upon a, a home occupation permit which the applicant disputes, or is protested by any property owner within three hundred feet, then the applicant shall be referred to the planning and zoning commi- Parowan City Planning and Zoning Commission. That's why I'm saying this is gonna be referred to you guys.
You just lost me.
A home occupation is a conditional use.
In zone R two?
In zone R two, but we don't have a table of permitted uses for the re- residential code.
Why is it permitted in zone R two?
We don't have, we do not have a table that shows permitted, conditional, and, and not permitted for the residential zones. Our table of uses that has the permitted, conditional, and not permitted is just exclusive to, um, commercial, highway service, industrial.
So the, the way I interpret that code is it says, basically says in R two, one of the conditional uses is home occupations. Once it says we can have home, home occupations, it doesn't take us anywhere farther than that.
Right, and the conditional use process is the application, the review by, is this process that we're talking about?
Right. Yeah, the conditional use is simply that, yes, in this zone you can have home occupations. But it, there is no list that says which ones we can and can't have, that I know of. If some, if somebody knows of one published somewhere, that'd be awesome, but there's not one in our city code.
So Judy, if, if you could go back, pull that back up on, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. If you go to, um, like general commercial zone, uh, commercial district, G C one, and you see that table of permitted uses, that's what you're referring to, but if you go back up to the top of it, it just has those general, commercial, highway service, industrial, manufacturing, one and two. We don't have a table of uses, like a type of use for the residential stuff. It, it, the table is, is basically just what it says, permitted uses, and it says a couple of things, conditional uses, and a couple of things. And the process by getting a conditional use permit is applying for a, administratively, applying for a permit. And as long as it's not, there isn't a problem that the administrator has, or if there's not any pro- um, anybody that protests it, then that's usually just granted. In this case, it's protested, so.
Right.
Okay.
And anything else, Dan?
No, that's all.
Okay. And I don't have anything, so, and with that said, there's one more thing to do.
I make a motion to adjourn the.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Eight oh nine.